Well, we are at 4:02 NFT. I think everyone has joined us and supposed to. So I'm going to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Glad to see all of you. Again, we're saying happy birthday to Ms. Page. She recently celebrated a birthday. So happy birthday, Wanda. And just want to also note, I saw in our communications that it is National Principals Month. So we are thankful for all of our principals and the amazing work that they do every single day. So we love all of our staff, but this month we get to celebrate with our principals. So thank you to all of our principals. So I will read our board norms and protocols as we do at every board meeting. As a board, we agree to respect the differences of opinions in making the decisions for the district to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meeting, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. So with that, I would ask Ms. Smith to go ahead and do a roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Brownlee Page, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Dr. Jaeger.
B.C., present.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Thank you, everybody. Before we approve the special agenda, I have a request to notice up, and Greg's going to have to help me with this language here, to notice up a special meeting for today in addition to the topics that were originally noticed to discuss in order to add an executive session. So asking if we would waive notice to do that. I think, Greg, does that sound about right? Did I miss something?
Yeah, so technically, because this is a special meeting, you can't make a motion to amend the agenda or add a topic to the special meeting. So the only thing you can do is notice up an additional special meeting, which the board would have to unanimously waive notice for that additional special meeting to take up the additional topic. So that's the way you would have to do it.
Okay, so.
So moved, or did you make the motion? Or do we need to make the motion? Or you made it?
I will make that motion.
Okay.
Have I seconded?
Yeah.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? If not, Ms. Smith, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Okay, hold on just a second. So just for clarity, we are approving the agenda for the special meeting only?
No, you're not approved the agenda yet. This motion is for the purpose of waiving notice for an additional special meeting to be held today at the same time. An additional topic would be for an executive session on the personnel exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger.
B.C., yes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everybody. So now we would need to approve the special agenda for today. Is that right, Greg?
That's correct.
Entertain them. Entertain the motion?
Moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger.
B.C., yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everybody. All right, so we will jump right into our board discussion. The first topic for discussion today is regarding our superintendent search. So as you all are aware, we are in the process of discussing and looking at the process for our search for our permanent superintendent. And you all should have received materials regarding the search, and hopefully you had a chance to work through those, to look through them. And so now would be the time to have a discussion on the process. So we are, you know, we're in a timeframe where, you know, we're not behind, but it'd be great to get started and really start digging into the search on a new permanent superintendent. And, you know, we've had some discussion on what that may look like. In front of you or in your packet, you should have received an RFP that was designed previously or used previously for a search firm or for search firms to send to us and for us to select the search firm. So, you know, I guess before we dive straight into that, you know, I thought it might be helpful for us to look at a timeline. And Ms. Page and I, I say "I", but Ms. Page really did a lot of the legwork. So thank you, Ms. Page. And putting together a timeline of what this search could look like, just so that we, you know, are prudent and thoughtful on how we move forward on this. And hopefully you had a chance to look at that timeline as well. And if there's any feedback on what that looked like, you know, I would open that up now. You know, we don't want to put this off. And I know we want to move forward in a thoughtful manner, but we don't want to rush it, but we also don't want to put this off too long as we search for a permanent superintendent. So you should have the timeline in front of you or sent to you. I think the recommendation was that today we would go through the RFP for a search firm and finalize that and approve that RFP in the hopes that, and jumping forward, you know, we would give a couple of weeks for firms to submit an RFP to us. And then later in October, have some interviews with those firms that potentially could be selected. And early November, have a session to announce the selection of the search firm. So I would take any feedback on that. Or Ms. Page, I don't know if you want to, you know, say anything else about the process that you've, or the timeline that you've helped us develop.
Well, the only thing I was going to say is I followed pretty much the format that Mr. Goheen, that we set up in 2018. We just changed the date. It didn't make sense to reinvent the wheel. And we did also include the list of places where we would advertise, as well as those entities that we requested a proposal. We had several. It was just a matter of following the guidelines, if it's acceptable.
I have a couple of questions about the timeline.
Okay.
So I was trying to understand where it would be we would select the firm versus the possible candidates, because it wasn't clear as far as when it says, like, January, choose top five candidates possible. If we're choosing a search firm for October, November, I don't think that would give us time for December and January to have five possible candidates chosen. Or were we saying we're going to leave it open this December and January? I think that's kind of where I got a little confusion. So could you clarify that in the timeline?
Yeah, okay. The way, and I was kind of following what we had before.
I just did.
Okay. I'm looking. I wrote it on different papers, okay. The company is basically going to do most of the hard work for us. We would choose, use October, November to go through and pick that company, or at least pick the top five and then choose, and then allow them to do the work and present candidates after we choose whichever company we're working with.
Well, NFT, that's what I got a little confused about, because I think, I would hope that we maybe would start earlier to choosing the candidates of, you know, once we put the RFP out there. Because I looked at the list of those that applied last time to do our search firm. And I sent that out as well, because I was looking to see, you know, who all was out there as far as candidates. And I know that we really wanted to choose someone who knew our area a little more. So I was wondering if it's possible for us to consider those who have previously applied. I know Ray Associates had reached out to us already.
Well, they're on the list of possible candidates.
Yeah, yeah. So I was wondering if there's a way, maybe we could think about those two that applied before and make that window a little shorter, since we already had an interview with a number of candidates, to just maybe a month for the new RFP or something of that nature, so that we could already have them on board a little sooner, so we can start getting information back.
Stacy, which timeline are you looking at? Are you looking at the one that says that we would select the search firm by November 6?
Let me see. No, I'm not looking at that one. I'm looking at the one Randy sent out on 9/8. Was there a difference?
There's a different one.
Yeah, it's a different one.
That's a different one. Okay.
I'm sorry. And I just, I just resent it maybe an hour ago as well. I sent it, I think, late last week or early this week. And then I just resented it to everyone this afternoon. So, yeah, no, I think we're all in agreement, Dr. Jaeger, that we want to start sooner than later with the search firm. This timeline would be giving companies about two weeks roughly to submit their proposals to us. And then we would search, or we would do interviews with them, and then come up with a final selection of the search firm no later than November 6, I think, is what the timeline says.
Yeah, this, over 30th, 31st, we would start with the interviews and then have a special session to announce the search firm by November 6 or 7.
Okay, great.
That got twisted up.
Yeah, it's the timeline Randy sent out last week when he told us about that.
Yeah, sorry about that. I know we've sent out a few different timelines on things, but it can get a little messy. So I apologize for that. But, yeah.
Thank you.
So in the first line, you probably want, we probably want to add approved search firm RFP, because we're not approving the search firm today.
Right.
Approved RFP. And that needs to be added there. And then the bullet point that is in blue, the second to the last, the way it reads, we would interview with selected firms or individuals. So are these individuals considered headhunters or individuals considered those who have applied?
You know, I just followed the format. Most of the time, we were dealing with companies. And then they had an individual who was their representative. So I didn't know if I put the two together like that. For Claire.
That thing clarifies that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the timeline? You know, I think, yeah, I think it's a pretty aggressive timeline, but I think, you know, we've done this recently, a couple of years ago. So there's some history in terms of some of the, as Dr. Jaeger mentioned and Ms. Page. And we know some of the potential applicants. So I don't think we'll have any trouble getting search firms to apply. I think we, you know, the timeline seems pretty reasonable that Ms. Page laid out for us. But any other thoughts?
I like the timeline, Wanda. I think you did a really good job in laying that out. And it's aggressive, I think. And we need to be aggressive and get it on, get it started and get moving.
I also agree. And also, the list of newspapers probably needs to be updated. And even there could be Asian Chambers or other entities that have come into this position since two years ago or whatever, whenever we used it. So just probably need to update the list.
Absolutely. Okay, absolutely. We should all take a look at that. And if we feel that there are certain groups missing that we know of, then I would reach out to, you know, Ms. Page or I, and we can update that list to make sure we get everyone included. And we'll make sure we spread this far and wide.
Yeah.
And also, I like the RFP. There's just a couple of dates that need to be modified in the document. So are you asking for us to, if you're asking for us to make approvals, and we would, do we need to review it before it goes out? Or are we trusting that Greg will make the appropriate recommendations to send out?
Yeah, I think if we can approve the timeframe and even the closure of the date that we'll accept applications, and then, you know, we can work with Greg, Ms. Page, and I can work with Greg or whoever to update that RFP, make sure that the dates are correct. So the one date that stands out is to the October 20th by 2:00 p.m. local time is when we've asked our search firms to submit to the board or to Greg. Does everyone feel comfortable with that being the drop dead date for submissions of RFPs?
Generally, we would have it on a Friday. I'm not sure why we chose a Tuesday. Was there a reason for a Tuesday date?
It can be Friday. Again, this is nothing in stone.
Okay.
So we can change it to that Friday. That's not a problem. Which would be?
Are you thinking Friday, the 23rd? That would be a Friday? Or Friday, the 16th would be the Friday before that?
Mm-mm. And then when is our next board meeting?
We do have a board meeting on the 27th.
This would probably require special board meetings, separate board meetings from the regular board meetings. Probably the 20th was giving three weeks.
What does everybody think? Do we want the 20th or the 23rd?
I think the 20th is fine.
I'm okay with that date.
Yeah, I think the 20th is fine.
Okay.
Is there some reason that one is a 5:00 p.m. and the other is a 2:00 p.m.?
I was just following the fact. Two, I didn't quite get it either. But I thought, what the heck? It worked, worked.
And it may not have, we just don't know. But it seemed like if. I think 5, just close the business usually at 5, but don't have different times in there.
Okay. I'm fine with that, too. So we could say 5:00 p.m. for applications on the 20th? Is that okay with folks? Or do folks feel differently to be a different date?
11 o'clock is fine.
Okay. That's great.
So questions by 5:00 p.m. on the 16th, and the responses are due by 5:00 p.m. on the 20th.
Okay, and shouldn't it be Central Standard Time instead of local time?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll make sure we change that in the RFP. Central Standard Time.
Central daylight savings time.
Whatever it is, but not local.
That's probably why it says local, so they don't have to worry about whether it's standard or daylight.
Well, if, but if I missed 5 o'clock, then I got it. We have the issue. Let's be specific.
Okay, so October 20th, 5:00 p.m. Central Standard Time.
Daylight savings time.
Daylight savings time. Greg, you figure that out, Greg.
Yeah, because if you're someplace where there's no daylight savings.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll make sure we update those dates in the RFP. You know, so Dr. Jaeger brought up the RFP. I think it's a nice transition to kind of get into that. You know, we pulled from the previous RFP that was used for search firms. Hopefully you all had a chance to review that. Any thoughts, questions, anything glaring that you think, hey, we really should rethink what's used? Greg, it looks like you got something to say there.
Yeah, this is just a quick point. It doesn't require anything from the board tonight. But notice that the last date for questions is Friday, October 16th. If, for whatever reason, we receive questions, I would want the board to be available sometime between the 16th and the 20th to make sure we can give a response out to those questions. So I might, if there are questions come in, in other words, you guys need to be aware that we might need a special meeting to answer those questions so that gets out. I'm just pointing that out for everyone. So you may not, but be aware that we might have to call a special meeting to answer questions if we get any.
So you might need us available the 17th.
The timeframe.
Right. Because what would happen is if you have questions that are answered, and we put this in the packet, if there's any questions that are asked by the 16th, we probably post the answers to those questions on our website where everybody could use submitting an application, could take a look and look at, review that. We wouldn't have time to republish the answers to the questions. We just have to have a location where they can be publicly accessed. But in case some question comes in, it's the board's answer to the question, not anybody else's. So I would need the board to get together to answer those questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Greg. So everyone, keep the 17th open. Thank you. All right, so thank you for that. But so going to the RFP, are there, was there anything in particular with the RFP that we feel we need to discuss, rethink, look at again? You know, I think you all did a fabulous job last time with that RFP. I went through it, looked at it. It, you know, reads well. It covers a lot of things that we need. So I didn't see anything that was really missing or that really needed to be changed besides the date. Any other thoughts?
So I agree.
So would you like a motion? Is that what we need to do next, Greg? I move that the Board of Education approved the request for information proposal to initiate the process for the purpose of selecting a superintendent for the 2021, 2022 school year with the correction of the dates as specified in our discussion.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion or further questions?
Randy, just one other thing. I think Dr. Nguyen had mentioned updated places for publication or places to send it to. I don't think that needs to be part of this motion, but what I would encourage the board to do once this is approved, it'll go out. So if there's additional places, any board member wants it sent to, notify us of that as quickly as possible so we make sure we include those additional locations, okay?
Thank you. Should we notify you, Greg? Should folks just email you or Karen or Ms. Page or I? What's the best for you, you think?
I think Ms. Page or you are fine. Or if you want to copy Karen or I on it, that's fine as well. Just make sure it gets to where we can make sure it goes to those locations. I don't want it to die in an email somewhere.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for that. I appreciate your diligence on that. Do we want to set, you know, we have a little bit of time. Do we want to look at our calendars now and kind of?
Do we need to vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. You're right. I'm sorry. Thank you, Janie. Any other questions or thoughts on the motion? Ms. Smith, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger.
B.C., yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Dr. Jaeger, did I interrupt you? I'm sorry. Were you going to say something? Okay, I apologize. Okay, so do we want to look at our calendar? I know we've got a few weeks, but do we want to look at our calendars and think about a date to set, to review the RFPs that will be coming in? Or do you all just want to think about that and maybe at our next board meeting, come back with some dates and times to do that?
Maybe at our next board meeting. That way my calendar will be a little closer to date.
We could do that at the 13th, the meeting on the 13th, maybe?
Okay. That sounds great. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion under that? The superintendent search question? Greg, you have what you need from us?
So, and you don't have to do it this way. I'm trying to remember, and Dr. Nguyen, you might remember, too. Was the reason we had the 2 o'clock last time, did we set a board meeting to open the RFPs? Is that what we did? I think we did.
Not that why we set to.
I think it was. I think what we had done was we set that deadline so that we then had a board meeting and opened the RFPs at that board meeting. That way everybody had a copy of the RFP responses and then could take them home and evaluate them before we got back together to start making determinations. I believe that's what we did.
Okay, so is that our intent?
That's why I brought it up. You know, you're going to get the RFP responses in on the 20th, which is fine, and 5 o'clock's fine. Do you guys then want to convene a board meeting like the next day for the sole purpose of opening up the RFP so they can be included to all the board members?
And will we be virtual?
I think it's best to be virtual.
Or do it in Greg's office.
I mean, we could open them and then, and then immediately scan the documents and email them to all the board members on the spot. I was trying to think of the best way to do this, because you're going to want as much time as you can for the board members to review the RFPs responses.
23rd.
Last time, we did take them home.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I wouldn't want to force anybody to come in person if you don't feel comfortable either. So I think there, you know, we've got to give folks the option to be there virtually.
The 21st, the 21st is the ribbon cutting at West Park. And it would be agenda prep if we're looking at what the 21st looks like. So it's a full day.
My schedule's not open until like a Thursday. Um, so, but like I said, probably by the meeting on the 13th, I would be able to have more of a calendar update for October.
Do you all want to maybe put a tentative? I mean, Thursday, that gives us a day in between receiving all of the applications or RFPs, um, gives Greg's office time to, to make copies, get everything put together virtually and in person. We tentatively said that Thursday afternoon at four, four thirty, five o'clock, I'm looking at, at us folks who, who do, who work, um, whose schedule may be a little bit tougher during the day, you know, with a four, four thirty or five on that Thursday, just kind of put a tentative hold.
And we're saying Thursday, the 22nd?
Yeah. They would have a meeting on the 23rd.
I wouldn't, I would say don't hold up anything from me, but for me, that day is jam-packed. So there, I have no availability that day.
And it's for the, the purpose of just opening up the RFPs, getting them, and then being able to sit with them, re, review them after, take them home and review them or whatnot, right?
So I'd be okay if, if I could get a scanned copy, I would be fine with that. This wouldn't be available to me.
About the 24th?
That Friday?
Friday, the 23rd.
Saturday, the 24th.
Well, you've already said you're gonna select the finalist on the 23rd.
Oh.
Okay. Okay, so.
I was trying, just to kind of bring that back into the group, and that's kind of what I was saying, the quicker you guys have the RFPs, the longer you're gonna have to review them. I mean, even if there were just four board members that were available on the 21st in the morning, we could, we could convene the meeting, open the RFPs, and then I could provide copies to all the board members as soon as the meeting's over with. Meeting probably wouldn't take more than about 10 minutes to open them up, announce who, who would respond to the RFP, and then provide the documents to the board members.
Now, that'd be fine by me.
Because I, I'm just trying to give you guys enough time to be able to review everything before you guys get together to actually have a discussion on what you're doing. That's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, I can make the 21st in the morning work, you know, before the ribbon cutting or after, um, I don't know if there are other board members that could.
Eight o'clock on the 21st.
Okay. That's what ribbon cutting, are you?
Ribbon cutting is at 10.
Yeah.
I'll be able to be at the ribbon cutting, but I can't go earlier. I have meetings before it. I'm sure, but if, as long as four people are there to open them, I'm fine with, if there's four.
So can we do it at eight o'clock, Greg? Can you be up that early?
Can we do it? Eleven thirty, bad? Is the ribbon cutting gonna take that long?
We need to do it. It's scheduled for one hour.
I think the goal is to be able so that Greg's staff will have time to make copies and things of that.
Eight o'clock in the morning.
Right, just to be able to open them with four board members present to be sent out to everybody else.
Can we get four board members there? I, I can be there at eight.
I can be there at eight.
Ms. Humphries? This is the 21st, so we would need one more person.
Wanda, can you be there? Yeah, I can be there.
Ms. Page, it's perfect.
I don't want to, but yeah. You'll be there. At Greg's office or?
Yeah, I mean, it can, it can be my office, or you guys can be there virtually for, it just needs to be a public meeting where we receive and open the, the RFPs, identify who's responded, and then we'll scan copies and email them to all the board members so you have them, and then I'll, I'll post them in your board docs too, so you got them there.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Page, if you want a hard copy, or if anybody else does, let me know. We can make sure we get you that as well.
Okay. Yeah, I want a hard copy.
Make it virtually. Are you gonna make a virtual meeting, Greg, or not?
I, it could be a virtual meeting. All we're doing, all we're doing is opening up the RFP, who's responded.
I can be there. Okay. If it's virtual, I can be there at eight.
Yeah. I, I'm not, I'm not, this being a long production, I just want to make sure I get the documents to you as quick.
Okay.
Good.
I'd like a hard copy too. Okay. Eight o'clock, it's virtual.
And I got lost on the date. Did we, what date was that again?
The 21st.
The 21st. Okay.
And then after that, we need a meeting to get together to make the decision.
Okay. So I could do something virtual on the 21st if I need to meet in the morning on the 21st.
Okay.
Great. And that'll be a quick, like Greg said, a quick, maybe 10 minutes, just to open up the RFPs, announce who has applied, and then we'll all take them home, sit with them, be able to review them. As Dr. Jaeger said, we'll then have to schedule an, an additional meeting, um, to review them together, have discussion, select firms, uh, but if you, it sounds like you all want to wait until the 13th to pick that date, um, so your calendars can?
No, you've already said it for the 23rd. You've already set that date for the 23rd.
Yeah.
You respond and select the final, um, companies.
On Friday.
On Friday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Four thirty? Five o'clock? Or five? Give them time to get off work, everybody.
I could, if we're talking the 23rd, I could do earlier that day, so I'm good. Just let me know. These dates are bouncing back and forth.
I can do four o'clock.
I could do four o'clock on the 23rd as well.
How about Randy?
I can do four o'clock on the 23rd. Okay. Thank you. We're rolling. Uh, do we need to set up any other dates?
I think that's it for now, for that. That should cover the first part. And correct me if I'm wrong, if you're, you know, I think that covers the first part.
Yeah, that'll, that'll get us to at least have a, a meeting to review the, the RFP responses, um, and be able to select the firm that will be interviewed. Um, so we'll have to set up an interview date with those firms would be the next step, and then the session to select the actual firm. So those would be the next two action items after that.
So, Greg, just again, um, on the search timeline you've got, you actually have down October 30th as the interview date.
Okay.
So you've kind of, I mean, you don't have, it doesn't have to be that date, but that's what you have down.
Yeah.
Your next meeting's already set.
So could we pick a time? Or, or we need to see what time they can come in?
That may be an all-day meeting. Or at least a half a day.
Depending on how many we want to interview.
Exactly.
Okay. So should we wait to set the time on the 23rd?
So I would, I would just, yeah, just hold the 30th.
Exactly.
On your calendar if you can, um, at least half a day, or if you can right now, hold the entire day.
Yeah.
For potential interviews.
I couldn't do an entire day for the 30th.
For whoever, for whoever's available. Not every, not everybody will, may be available for every time period.
Right. For a fact, I won't be able to do all day.
That's fine. It's whatever's your.
Is there a certain time of day that works best? Like a half, the morning or the afternoon, Dr. Jaeger?
The afternoon, after three or four.
Now, I, I guess, I mean, this is a, this is a tentative timeline, and I guess you could technically, if you guys want to leave that interview date open for, after you get the RFPs and selection back, I just was pointing out that you actually had it down here as a date.
Okay.
And it'd be a virtual meeting.
If we did it like we did when we interviewed for the clerk, we kind of did that Friday, two, four, six, and then we did some on Saturday, right? To finish it up. And I think we could do it, it just depends on if it's three or four companies, or what, or whatever the wish is of the body.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So I, I think we can work it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, everybody. So yeah, just keep those dates in mind, keep those, some of those times in mind, afternoon on the 30th, it sounds like might be best for everybody. I'd love for everybody to be able to be a part of the process. I know timing can be, scheduling can be tough for everybody, but, um, if we can have everybody present, that just makes this for a, 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 a full body, like Ms. Page said, just have everyone be a part of the process. I think that would be great. So, um, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for your diligence on this. Any other thoughts or questions before we continue on? Thank you, Greg, and your office for, uh, receiving these applications. So we're excited, uh, in this next step of the process, and, uh, we, you know, as, as a board, I think I can say that we are, we are excited to continue this journey to find our permanent superintendent. And, uh, yeah, so we're looking forward to, to, to moving forward. Okay. So next on our agenda, um, we will have, and I'm looking on our screen, I know we're a little bit ahead of schedule of what I, um, asked, um, the Garcia Architecture to join us, but, uh, we've asked for some time, um, to discuss or to hear, uh, presentation from Garcia Architecture Firm, um, who has done an assessment of our main library, um, and, uh, their assessment is complete, and so I thought it would be good for us to hear directly from the firm to discuss their findings. Uh, you all received the executive summary. You also received a link to the full, um, uh, assessment for your review as well. Um, and I would ask Ms. Levers to go ahead and jump in and maybe just kind of give us a brief history background, um, and before we invite our guest to go ahead and present.
Mr. Lopez, before you proceed, is there another way to open that link? Um, I cannot open the link of the full evaluation.
Um, I will see if I can find a different way to send it. I know it's a pretty large document. It wouldn't let me attach, send it as an attachment. So let me see if I can figure that out and get that to you, Dr. Winn. Thank you.
For later, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Lopez, Board, Dr. Miguel. Um, and I can't see whether Garcia's are on or not, uh, but I will, uh, kind of share with you. I hope you can see this. Screen, can you? No?
No.
Not yet? Okay.
Not yet.
Okay. Let me see again. Uh, share screen. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, without, I mean, waiting for them to, to sign on, I thought, um, let, let's just go through and just, uh, how we got to where we are today, uh, for the main library project. Um, a couple of years ago, um, the, the community at the, in Argentine got together and they decided to come to the board to ask whether they could have a library because the library was kind of inefficient, uh, for the community. Um, it, the, the board then okayed that, and we completed, uh, the library, the South Library in 2012. We needed some, uh, extra libraries in the community, but obviously the, the, the funds weren't there. Uh, the, in 2014, the board then, um, decided to, for us to go ahead and purchase, uh, mobile libraries in order to take the libraries to the, to the, the community where it is needed. Um, then the board wanted to know what the status were of all the buildings. Uh, we brought the status to the board. Uh, Ethel Schlegel, when, when Ethel Schlegel was built 17 years ago, they could, they did not have enough funds to complete the top floor and the wraparound porch. Uh, so that was left off. Uh, and then, uh, we decided to, to, we gave the board, uh, all the buildings, the needs of, uh, the different library buildings, and then, um, we also then asked the board whether they, because the, the, uh, public libraries did not have a capital fund, and the board then, uh, decided at that time to increase the levy so that we could have, at least have, uh, some funding to, uh, you know, uh, do the maintenance or renovations, whatever was needed in the buildings. Um, we then completed Ethel Schlegel in 16, 2016, um, and now we can accommodate, uh, a whole, uh, like, all the sixth graders or the third graders or whatever, uh, comes to the library instead of just one class, because now we have a top floor, a bottom floor, and of course, the outside, uh, classrooms as well. Um, West Wyandotte was, um, the library that had, we had five, uh, service areas in the West Wyandotte Library, and that, uh, just ballooned our HR. We had to have each service area, we had to have two people, uh, man those desks. So in other words, when you open the West Wyandotte Library, you had to have at least 10 people at the library in order to open the library. And we, you know, it, it was just not conducive, uh, and we decided, okay, the best is to renovate that library and just, uh, build one service area so that at least two people can, can ma, man the desk. Um, the board then, as I said, approved the levy, um, and as noted, with the exception of West Wyandotte, we still need to complete the railings because it's not up to code, and it has been addressed so that it can be addressed for the future, except Main Library. The Main Library was left for last because obviously, uh, of funding. We didn't have enough funding, and we knew now that all the other libraries have been, uh, dealt with, so that we can just concentrate on, uh, the, the Main Library, knowing that that was the biggest of all the projects in, in the system. And it's also an amazing opportunity, uh, to not just revitalize, build a, a new or, uh, the building, but also to impact, uh, the continued revitalization of downtown. So just to give you kind of an idea of how it impacted the tax, if you, um, own a $50,000 house, obviously what you pay for the library is $5.34 a month. If you owe a $150,000 house, you pay $16.06, and of course, $2,000 is $21.60. Um, so how did we get there? The reasons because, uh, uh, for this feasibility study stems from the inefficiency that create long-term financial issues for the system. So in 2014, Ms., uh, Ms. Watson, Crystal Watson, and Ms., the late George Bradenthal were charged to lead the project as board representatives. Um, and we went through, uh, you know, a feasibility study, uh, the Nichols, or Nichols, as it's called, it's the Northeast Kansas Library System. I was the, uh, president at that time, and they are, uh, a volunteer to finance the feasibility stu, uh, study for our system. In 2016, we had Mr. Harold Brown and Ms. Janie Humphries, who took over as board representatives for the, for the same project, uh, which we also did, uh, work on, um, you know, getting something off the ground for the Main Library. And then, uh, in 2018, Ms., uh, Ms. Drew, Maxine Drew, not 2018, after 2018, uh, Ms. Drew and Mr. Lopez became the current board representatives for, uh, the project and the, the project that we have on right now. So just to give you kind of an idea of the inefficiencies, uh, cause, uh, financial issues, if you look at 2016, 2017, um, water and electricity for, uh, the South Library and the West Library, in comparison with the Main Library, we paid $32,000 just for water and, and, more than the two combined, uh, Main and, um, West. We worked hard to change chemicals, uh, in 2018 and 19, we brought it down to 17,000, but it's still a large difference between the two, and that is one of the reasons why we, um, are doing what we're doing right now. Um, what we did of, for the past, uh, feasibility studies, as, uh, recommended by the board, we made flyers, posters, handouts, we've, uh, and that's what it looked like. And then we also sent postcards to each member in the service, uh, household, sorry, in the service area, and we placed ads in the call and in other, uh, papers as well. A little bit, and, and I think, uh, if the, um, Garcia Architects, and they should be here now, uh, they, they'll take over and, uh, talk about this further, but I just wanted to show two pictures of, to show you what our dock is, the inefficiency of our dock. We have to, uh, build the boxes on the dock, whether it's winter, summer, because we don't have, we have no industrial elevator, and we have an inefficient dock where we have to, uh, disassemble boxes outside and then take them in on flat beds because we, we can't have forklifts coming in and out of the building. Um, we have, uh, problems with BPU, not problems with BPU, but a lot of problems with our, uh, water pipes. Uh, and as you can see, this is a 10-foot hole a cup, two, two years, two, three years ago, that, um, BPU had to fix, and, um, instead of fixing the hole because there was not enough money, they just fixed that, uh, this integrated pipe that is, is laying down on the floor. So we're not even sure what's going on underneath our building. I'm not gonna go too far through this whole, uh, because I want to, to give, um, them to explain to you, uh, what they found with the feasibility study. So I'd like if they, and I don't know I can see them, but if they are here, um, I'd like to introduce to you, um, the Garcia Architects LLC Group, which I really, I mean, let the board know that they're real professionals and, uh, delighted to work with. Uh, they make the community feel that, um, the community was in the driver's seat and not them. They, they continue to listen, they ask questions, uh, any ti, I mean, they were on the phone anytime they were needed, and, uh, you know, and they, I, I hope they will say that we've worked with them, because anytime they called, we were, we were ready to do so. So, um, I'm gonna introduce to you, uh, Mr. Rafael Garcia, who's a creative designer and also the owner of, of Garcia Architecture, uh, Mr. Matt Kaufman, who's the principal, and, uh, Mr. Rachel Mond, who are the project architects. Welcome, uh, gentlemen and lady.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Carol. Just real quick before, uh, you start, again, just want to say thank you to the Garcia Firm and your team for being with us today. Uh, we were a little bit ahead of schedule, so we jumped, we, we started before you joined, but, um, and Carol did a great job of just catching us up on some of the history, but I want to thank you, welcome you to the board meeting, and say thank you for being present and sharing your assessment findings with us. So with that, Mr. Garcia, thank you.
Thank you so much, Randy, and thank you, Carol, for your segue. Um, want to make sure that, uh, you, uh, reintroduce my right hand and left hand, left hand guard, and that's Rachel Mond, who, uh, worked intimately on the project, and, uh, Matt Kaufman in a moment, who'll walk you through some of her findings, but I want to let you know how this is not a normal project. This isn't something that, um, is common, is, doesn't happen very often, uh, and what I mean by that is it's a project of such significance, it's not only just, it's- It's not only just its use, but its meaning in the community is significant and what it represents for our entire city is vital. And we are excited to be working on this project for sure, but we also know it takes a lot of people to make something like this happen. So we couldn't do it without the community, we couldn't do it without the library, Carol and her staff and their leadership, couldn't do it without Doug Clemens and his background on this. And of course, we couldn't do it without, we need the board. We need you all. So we are very appreciative of being invited to work on this project with you. It's outstanding, it's personal, and I'm going to drop that and give it over to Matt and let him walk you through some of our summary and findings of what we've heard and what our response is to what we found. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rafe. Thank you. And just so everyone knows, Rafe and myself and Rachel, we are not all Carol Levers drones. We just used Carol's email to get to this meeting, so you can easily tell which one is Rachel, but just Rafe is the gentleman who just spoke and I'm Matt, I'm speaking now. We're not actually Carol Levers. So I am going to share our PowerPoint. I believe you can all see that now, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
All right. So again, thank you very much. We did truly enjoy working on this project. What I'm going to go through right now, I'm going to do as quickly as I can so we can get to questions, answer your questions. This is really a verbal executive summary. And I'm sure many of you have probably already read the executive summary. Maybe some of you have even dipped your toe or waded into the full report and read some of what is there. So I'm just going to do a quick summary of what we've been through over the last eight to nine months. With any project like this, there's a lot of steps that we go through that is all about analysis and understanding the existing building, understanding what the needs are and where the community wants to go. So that starts with a physical assessment of the property and physical assessment means not just the building, but the building systems. It's a functional assessment. We actually meet with the staff and we get an understanding, if not an in-depth view of what their day is like and how they actually use the building. We had a couple of sessions with the community stakeholders and actually with the staff as well to really vision what is the future of the library, what they see as important for a downtown main branch library. Then we look at some very critical criteria to know that we properly size through the programming exercise what the library should be. And honestly, that includes the, a great deal of the peer facility comparisons where we're looking at peer facilities around the country that are in like-sized communities and facilities right here within the region that serve as similar function. Then we get into the programming and it's meeting with key staff and Carol and some of her senior leadership to put together the laundry list of spaces and how big those spaces need to be and who's in them and how they relate to each other, that whole process. And from there, we develop some concepts, diagrams, and probable costs. And I want to be, want to be very clear and very explicit that that's concept diagrams. These are not designs. This is really a test fit of the program so that we can kind of see on the existing site you have, the existing property you have, and even within the existing building you have, how would the future program actually lay out? And then we have some just recommendations and conclusions from all that. So getting into the physical assessment, you know, Carol was just talking about some of this and I'm sure many of you are very aware of this from spending time at the main branch yourself, but the building entrance is not very inviting. It's not easy to find. From the parking lot, it's, you got to go all the way around the building. And even from the front of the building from Minnesota, it's not right up on the street. It's set back. And especially as we get into these longer winter hours, it's in a lot of shadow and just not very inviting. And that also goes to security. Security is part of the concern there, getting into and out of the building and even within the building. Once you're in the building, the vertical circulation is actually outside of the controlled space of the library. So that's an issue. And circulation, it's a multi-story building, it's tight, corridors are not very generous, the stairwells are not very generous, so circulation is an issue. Parking is an issue. It's hard to find, it's not actually off Minnesota, it's accessed off of Anne, a block south. There's a little bit of limited parking, there's more parking in front, but that's a concern. And as Carol just said, the loading dock obviously is a huge concern. One of the trips, we were actually there while a semi-truck was trying to make a maneuver. It's about a, I think he went through about a 12-point turn to get his truck turned around so he could back it up close to the loading dock and offload. So that is definitely an issue. Building systems, we brought in a consultant we work with a lot and we looked at the evaluation of the mechanical, electrical plumbing and even got into security and communications and other systems. Many of them are already at their useful lifespan and others are probably within a decade of being at the end of their useful lifespan. The building envelope, this is a building that was opened in the mid-sixties and the building envelope is not very efficiently designed. It is not up to modern standards for thermal efficiency. And the windows, the seals on the windows are in bad shape and many of them are cracked and the glass is frosted and so that's an issue. And then just the functionality of the interior space. And honestly, this, I think part of this is really the fact that it was designed as the school board building, school board offices, and the main branch was on the first floor. And as the branch has expanded into other spaces, it's now on multiple floors and the ability for staff to get around is just not as good and efficient as it should be. And that kind of segues into the functional assessment. The collections, the first floor and second floor where the adult and the youth and young adult collections are undersized and horribly constrained, there's not much room, there's actually no room for growth, they're out of space already. The staff areas are poorly located, some are in the basement, some are on third floor, some are on second floor, first floor. They're scattered throughout the building and getting to and from the areas they need to be is not efficient. And that also leads into the building layout, the supervision, again, because the way the staff is scattered out, the way the staff spaces layout, there is not good visual supervision of the space, not very efficient visual supervision of the space. And then wayfinding, just for the patrons. If it's, if it's bad for the staff, it's equally bad for the patrons. It's not a very intuitive wayfinding system. If you've been there many times, it's probably very easy to get around, you know your way around. But if you're new to the library, you're immediately, you come in that entrance and you're confronted with the circulation desk and you've got no visual cues as to where the various assets of the library are. And clearly, the restrooms, these are mid-century restrooms that were never designed with any intent of meeting our modern standards for accessible design. And even though there have been some retrofits to the restrooms in the past, they are still just horribly undersized for the occupant load that they are trying to serve. Poor acoustics within the space and there's very limited areas to have sound isolation. And we heard from Carol and other staff about wanting to do events from time to time that may include readings or small lectures within the main collection area or even musical events. And it's just very disruptive to the whole library when they try to do something like that. And then meeting space, there is meeting space there, I'm sure you're all aware. We use the meeting space for a number of our meetings, meeting with staff and stakeholders, but everything we hear is that the library could certainly make better use of more meeting space and more flexible meeting space. They are already turning away a number of opportunities to host events and meetings at the main branch facility. So we got into visioning and, you know, a lot of this, I think, is very obvious based on what we've just been through. Functional adjacencies and being able to locate spaces so that the collections can be more efficient. If the whole main branch honestly was on one floor, that would be the ultimate solution. And I think everything we've heard, as we've talked to people, have, as we've talked to Carol and the staff, have really led us to that, to realize that, that they would be able to so much more efficiently manage the collections area, the reading areas, if they had all of that on one floor and the staff, the staff could better manage that. And flexibility, we noted that the collections are undersized and already out of space. There's no opportunity for growth. And because of the vast number of walls, I mean, many of the spaces over there right now are all walled off. There's a dedicated space for the multimedia and for the youth and young adult and for the adult. And so that really cuts back on flexibility. And again, a nice thing about a very open floor plan that's all on one floor is that over time, the collections and reading areas and other functions of the library can ebb and flow and be rearranged much more easily. Improved staff functionality. Right now, as we said, the library does not do anything to provide efficient staff functionality the way they have to move between floors and narrow hallways with large pallets of books and other things. So that is a huge need for the library. Improved patron experience, again, goes hand in hand with the wayfinding. Right now, the wayfinding is very bad. A new library on one floor would make that whole wayfinding process much easier and a much better patron experience. Providing flexible event meeting space, we spent a lot of time actually talking with Carol and her staff and some of the stakeholders about the number of opportunities for lectures, readings, movies, all types of events that could be there if they had better and more flexible space. And resources for social work is one that really, we learned a lot about that one just from spending time there. And the staff is really to be commended. I think the staff down there does a tremendous job dealing with the homeless population in downtown Kansas City, Kansas. We saw it time and again when we were there. People were coming in and they were looking for a specific staff person that they had built a bond with and they wanted to talk to that person. And so what the, what the staff is already doing is remarkable and it would be great to give them a dedicated social workspace where somebody could be brought in purposely to help them with that effort. And then outdoor programmable space, this was another need that was brought up by both staff and community stakeholders that being able to use outdoor space, you're right there by the Huron Park. It's not necessarily set up to host a lot of events, but if we took a look at how the whole site lays out and how we might have some opportunity for outdoor space, either on the site or even a rooftop type thing that could be outdoor and programmable, that would be very advantageous. Then we got into, looking into the, just the demographics and all of those other things about KCK that help us to determine what this library should be. The demographics, what we know, what should be very obvious, I think, is this is an older part of town, it tends to be a poorer part of town. And those changes are not, those demographics are not going to change over time. The trends show us that that's going to continue. It's also very heavily an immigrant part of the urban part of our city. So that again is a demographic that is going to just continue to be there over time and is something the staff really needs to be able to address. This is a central library and that, that means something because there's, you've got branch libraries and you've got main libraries. And the main library, the central library, as it were, really provides a lot of resource. It is the hub that provides resource to all the other libraries, so that is a significant issue. And so when we were looking at peer libraries, that's really what we looked at. We looked at in, in communities that were like-sized to our service area, which we really looked at as Wyandotte County as a central library. So communities that were like-sized, we looked at their central libraries and that was our peer study from that objective. The design population is very important. As I was just talking about, Wyandotte County is what we determined was our design population because that feeds into, there are, there are resources out there that we use that talk about library programming. And those resources tend to, from a default position, they tend to look at a floor area per person or volume collection per person. Those are kind of the two metrics that we really looked at to balance how we were programming this library versus what's kind of the industry standard. So we wanted to look at where we are right now, 2020, as we evaluated this, we started with 2020, but we looked at a 30-year horizon, which was 2050, to see how this library would grow over time. And one of the things that we really thought about and talked a lot about was, it really is, and Carol mentioned this in her brief introduction, it is, it is time to look at the main branch and not just because the other branches have all recently been looked at, but the original Carnegie Library that was built on this site opened in 1907. And the facility we're in now opened in 1966. So that was nearly a 60-year span. We are now into 54 years of this building, we're rapidly approaching that 60 years again. And that's a, that's a reasonable lifespan for a building that serves the function of what this building is. It is a central library. So it is time to look at this and try to decide what our future is. So the, the population, the design population that we looked at, right now, Wyandotte County is roughly 165,000 residents. And we know that the trends would indicate that that's going to grow to 192,000 by 2050. So looking at the current branch facility, it is undersized based on the peer libraries that we looked at. The collection size in volumes currently, the library, as we calculate it based on the current population and the current number of volumes that are available, it's 1.18 per capita, 1.18 volumes per person. And the target, the, the design standards would indicate that for a moderate-sized central library, a target would be 3.9 volumes per person. And then just in analysis of the square footage, currently, the main branch is at 45,100. And again, looking at the national standards for the size of community we're in, the target would really be more like 68,000. So we're already currently well-undersized for the service area that the library serves. So some programming realities, as we worked through the program with Carol and staff, we ended up at 85,400 square feet for the main branch. And that's, that's the collections, the reading areas, all the staff, all the back-of-house space that they need to do their job. And then 17,100 for the system administration. Carol and her staff and her offices up on the third floor need another 17,000. So you can see the 84th, the 85,400 is a little over our target of 68,000, but it's, it's definitely well under, or well over what the current available of 45,100 is in the branch facility. So what we did next, after we got through the programming, is, is we looked at three possible scenarios and these are programming diagrammatics. So the first one we looked at, the first one we looked at is the existing building as it is. And we made one small addition, actually two small additions, but because the vertical circulations, the stairs and elevators are so horribly undersized and out of date, we determined that it was probably cost-effective to make those two portions and add-on. But then the rest of the building in this scenario is all just renovation. And so one thing I want to call your attention to is that the, if I can get my laser pointer to work. to work. So the, this, oops. All right, let's try this again. All right, so my laser pointer's working. So this chart right here is going to be the same on all the diagrams. It's, it's the same list. And so looking at this scenario, these are the spaces that we're able to put back into the main building, the current building as it stands. So as you can see, it, it's really focused entirely on the main branch. The administrative functions do not fit in the existing building. It's only main branch functions. In this scenario, also, based on the age of the building systems, it would assume that we are gutting the building, removing all the building systems and starting over. All the partitions are gone because we really need the flexibility to be able to arrange the spaces without relying on where the existing walls are. And as I said earlier, it's, it's all new vertical circulation on the outside of the building. This approach would take the least amount of disruption to the site, would have the least amount of disruption to the site, but there is no administrative office area within this building. So there'd have to be a separate project to address where to move the admin function. So this is, this is the lowest-cost solution, the lowest-cost approach to doing this. It, it limits the scope of work outside the building and there's really no change to the parking or site circulation. However, it, it doesn't provide any of the space for the administrative offices. It doesn't actually even provide 100% of the space required for the main branch library. We only had about 62,000 square feet in there, so we were still short on some of those critical collections areas that we need for the library. And it really doesn't allow for efficient management still of the library because it's still, the main branch is spread out over four floors, which is not going to be terribly The next concept was to look at if we added on to the building to give us all of the square footage that we needed. We can do that. We can build around all the sides of the building, which would give us enough area over the four floors, again, to get all of the, the branch and all of the admin into the building. Again, we're, we would be completely gutting the, the building and just using the structure. So it'd be all new mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems. And we would have far more disruption to the site on this one, but we believe that we can still, on that site, have the parking and the loading dock and the other functions that we have currently. So this does get all of the, the branch and the admin in there. And it does give us the ability to have a new exterior shell that is thermally efficient and meets all of the energy standards that, that we try to meet in today's buildings so that they are more efficient and they use fewer resources on utilities. But it, again, it's limited because we're dealing with an existing structure that has a, a short floor-to-floor height and it has a very tight column bay of approximately 25 feet on center. So even though we can get some open spaces, they're column-filled open spaces and there's, there's those limitations that we have to deal with. Program elements are still not entirely efficiently arranged because the branch library is sp- spread out over multiple floors and we really still have no ability to have any kind of outdoor space for programs. The third concept, and again, we're working just with the existing site, the third concept demolishes the existing building entirely and builds a new building that is, puts the vast majority of the branch library spaces all on one floor because we are now no longer constrained by any of the existing structure. And our only constraint here is the actual sizes of the property. So we're, we're still not able to get all of the branch library in one floor, but we do accomplish getting most of it on one floor. So this gives us a far more efficient layout of the three. It is the most efficient because we get the, the primary branch spaces all co-located on one floor. We no longer have the limitations of the existing structure to deal with, so we have a far more open environment, a far more flexible environment. It would allow, of the three, it would allow the, the most growth to the main branch. And it, it can easily be incorporated or designed to incorporate lessons learned from our current situation that we're dealing with, which is COVID-19. And we, we can touch, touch on that a little bit more in a minute, but I, I just want to say that from a design standpoint, from what we're dealing with in the architectural community right now, it's actually, I think, kind of very fortunate that we're going through this study at this time because we're really learning a lot about the future of public spaces and how to design them in such a way that cleanability is, is paramount, the ability to socially distance is, is going to be important. And even, even the ability to have entrances that don't force people into very narrow close quarters to get in and out of buildings is an important part of our future, we believe. The major con to, to this approach is, again, still because of the limited area of our site, we really have no ability to impact the site with outdoor event space, with the exception of the roof. That would be the one place that a new, a new library of that size on that site could have outdoor space. So the last thing we looked at is costs. And so the way we did this, again, because we're working with very programmatic, diagrammatic floor plans, these aren't design plans. So we're, we are looking at costs as a range. And we've met with and talked with some cost consultants that we use on other projects and they went through our plans with us and, and gave us some feedback as well. So the costs here, there's, there's two line items for each of the three concepts. The hard costs is really looking at what is the construction cost of the building? Everything that would go into the construction itself. The soft costs, and again, it's a range, and at this point, it's a percentage of about 20 to 25% of the hard costs. The soft, the soft costs are going to be the professional fees, consulting engineers, civil, testing, permitting, legal fees, expenses, reimbursables, all of those things that are outside of the actual construction cost, but they all have a bearing on the total project cost. So for Scheme One, which is the renovation of the existing building that just gets us the main branch, we believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,400,000 to $23,750. Moving on to Concept Two, the costs go up on, on the hard cost to $34,500,000 to $37,000,000. And again, a lot of that is because now we are doing so much more construction around the existing building. It's, the construction costs go up really from the construction of the shell. That's a lot of what drives that cost up. And the soft costs like, also go up then because they're just a percentage of the, of the hard costs. So we're now looking at, we believe, $41,400,000 to $46,250,000 for the addition renovation concept. And then the third concept, $42,500,000 to $52,500,000 for doing the new construction. Again, the soft costs go up because they're just a percentage. And now our total project costs, we believe, are somewhere in the neighborhood of $51,000,000 to $65,625,000. And so that's, again, that's all because we're just, we're now all new construction, but again, on that existing site. So our conclusions from all of this is that everything we heard in meeting with the community and meeting with the staff, clearly, the main branch is a very important asset within downtown Kansas City, Kansas, and it's, it's going to remain so well into the future. And it serves a very important place in the Kansas City fabric, downtown Kansas City, Kansas fabric. The age of the building, it's 50 years old. It's, it's lived a good life, but it is at its, at end of life. And nothing short of a really extensive renovation would make the existing building feasible well into the future. And what we really ought to be looking for here is not what's going to get us through the next decade, but what's going to get us the next 50 to 60 years of a main branch library in downtown KCK. COVID-19, I just, I just touched on it. We're seeing already in public spaces, a lot of conferences and other design meetings where people are talking about what is the future of public buildings and how are they going to change? And I think that is going to have a very significant impact on the design of the next main library. Limitations of the existing building, even with completely gutting the building, we're dealing with a structural system that is very tight and very short. And all of that, dealing with the existing building would put limitations on a new library in terms of designing a library that's going to be the most efficient for Carol and her staff. Fulfillment of the mission, library that's far more flexible. We heard time and again, the ability to be flexible with the library space, the events and meeting spaces, all of those things really demand flexibility that the current structure just does not support very well. And then disruption, I, I really haven't talked about this yet, but we want to be very clear that all three of these concepts, because we're just looking at the existing property that the, the building sits on now, all three of these concepts are going to be a disruption to Carol and her staff and the main branch staff because none of these solutions would allow the library to remain operational while we are constructing the new library. In all of these scenarios, the staff would have to relocate, the books would have to relocate, all of that would have to relocate to another property temporarily and then move back into this location after a new building is built. Therefore, with that in mind, we believe very strongly that there is a fourth option out there, which is to find the right property, hopefully right there on the same block. That's, that's a great block and a great location for a library in downtown. But find a new location where a new library could be constructed while the current library remains in operation. And then after that is over, it is simply moving next door into a new building. We, we think that it would be a very important thing for the board to give consideration So thank you very much for listening to me. I, I tried not to drone on too much, but I will stop my share here and we can turn it over to questions.
Great. Thanks so much for the presentation and the information, which very much aligns with the executive summary you all sent. I will, before we get to the questions and before I forget, I know I would, if, I'm wondering if there's a way to get the, the full assessment, a copy of the full assessment so that we can get over to all board members? I think I had a, I had trouble getting the link to some board members and so may have been on my end that I didn't copy the link correctly. I know it's a pretty expensive document, so maybe you can work with Carol and, and Carol, you can get us the full, the full document so we can share with all board members. But appreciate the information and I'd open it up for questions.
Hi, this is Dr. Stacey Yeager. I want to thank you guys so much for visiting today. I did have a couple of questions as they related to. I know that we raised a number of funding from taxes already for a new library. I'm not sure, Carol, would you be able to describe more about how much money is already raised in this effort?
The, sorry, the capital fund so far, I think we have about nine million if I'm not mistaken. And then, of course, we have extra overheads, but yeah, that's about it at the moment. We haven't gone into fundraising because we are waiting on the board's direction, you know, what, which direction to go before we engage the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library Foundation, because they standing in the pipeline waiting for your direction, you know, once we decide which way we're going and how much we have to raise, like we did with South, I mean, but on a bigger scale.
Okay, so last time, give us an idea of how much needed to be raised and how much you guys raised.
Are you talking about the South Library?
Yes.
The South Library cost us five or six?
Six million.
Million, six millions, I apologize. And it was the public and the library, you know, that went to the school to do that. And we, the public came up with a little bit less than two million. We've lifted that up and paid the board back because the board took charge of building that facilities. Because at that time, we did not have the funding because all buildings was owned by the board. And the board decided, okay, they will then purchase the property, build the building, and then we paid the board off. So we have completed that. We don't owe the board a cent of, you know, that building. So the building is clear.
Yeah. So based upon these recommendations, do you, which one do you lean toward the most? Or which one do you think would be feasible?
Yeah, just, just feasibility-wise, I think it'll be feasible if we could stay in the building until a building is built. Because, you know, having to move somewhere else will either have to rent, run a library from another building, that will cost a lot of money. But having to build a building and then move into the building if need, I mean, when it's completed, would be the best scenario I see. And then it can be built to the specifications that will benefit the community and of course the needs of the library as well.
Ms. Levers, I'd like to ask you and the consultants about four questions, please. When you talk about community stakeholders, how many and who are these people?
We have a list of people that attended that we've, you know, we've, we invited everybody and the, the community people came at different times to the meetings, but we had a core group that continuously came and wanted to know what's happening. And we had about, I think it was 35.
Thirty-five?
Yes.
Okay. And how many taxpayers do we have for this KCK? Is that the, the 55,000 households that make up the district?
How many people are within the main library?
The taxpaying body, you know, again, the library is a tax, taxing entity. So how many taxpayers are in the body politic for USD for this?
I can, I don't have the answer, and I can try and get that, I really don't know.
Now, did you say for the South Branch, the way you described it, was that a bond or just straight out loan?
A straight out loan.
Loan, okay. Excuse me, let me just ask a couple more. Of your consultants, do, and you may be, the fourth recommendation about the fourth option, acquiring adjacent land to the east, could you describe and be specific about what this actually means?
The, a couple of years, and this is years ago, I mean, I think it's maybe 10 years ago, the owners of the bank came and offered to, to kind of gift us that portion of the, the bank because I think they just wanted it as a tax write-off at that time. And we, you know, I shared that with Dr. Lane and Dr. Mather, I think. But at that time, they thought, no, there's too, that building had too many problems. But, you know, so that building was standing vacant and on and off they had. So we were just thinking, maybe that could be the property that we could acquire or, or try and work with and then build the, I mean, build the building in that side and still be adjacent, you know, and then have the outdoor space here in the old space. That, that was just, and, and that may not even be, I don't know, but I'm just saying at that time, and that was what we were, were thinking of.
So that leads me to then the question to your consultants. This is a seven-story building, is that correct? The bank building? The bank abandoned it?
Yeah. I, I, and I'm not sure if it's seven, but it's a tall building, yes.
Okay, so it's a tall building and it's, and it's on this, this pad that is at the corner to, at least adjacent to the library?
Yeah, six, I think it's six, in Minnesota, the Yeah, six, I think it's six, and Minnesota, the corner.
Uh huh.
Yes.
So, again, during the discussions that, you know, Ms. Page and I were in on a couple of the discussions when it got, it got, let's say it started shifting, that same idea was floated that, you know, you assume this seven building, seven-story, perhaps asbestos-filled building that the bank abandoned for a dollar. And then the cost of destruction is of course, on the, then the new owner, correct? Then the, the offer changed to, no, it's not going to be given to you for a dollar, you'd have to purchase it. So to conserve time, what is the consultant's estimate of option number four, acquiring, and I'm saying quote, acquire adjacent land to the east, that's just half, when we're speaking of a multi-story building, bank abandoned it, who knows the cost of, let's say, who knows the, who, what the contents have? What does your consultant come up with the cost of just that?
I don't think we've discussed that, because your direction was just the feasibility studies of the existing, so we did not go into that. I mean, that was not, and I mean, they can answer to it as well, I, you know, I, but I mean, that was not the direction that, that the board gave us.
That's true, but it's, it's stated here as a therefore, you know, as a conclusion.
Yeah, we, and if that was not available, the whole, at the, from the back of that building, straight to the end of N, not the end of N, at the corner of N and six, that's also an empty block, if you, if you look at the aerial view.
Right, like next to the Rose Garden. So I'm just saying, as, as, as a complete document here, I'm just asking, what, what cost was associated with this? I mean, one would think when this final paragraph was crafted, I'm sure there was some consideration of cost. And if there is, if there wasn't consideration of cost, then I'm concerned that it was added as a therefore recommendation.
I, I'll jump in. Dr. Nguyen, thank you for your question. It's an excellent question, and yes, we, we have talked about it and thought through it. And I would point out that the Concept Three, which is a brand-new building on the existing site, there's considerable demolition cost in that building as well. So I can't, I cannot say, we cannot say that you could literally just transfer that money and spend it on the other site and it would be the same money, but it's pretty reasonable to project that we think the cost range would be very close to where we are on Concept Three, because there's significant demolition cost of your existing building and the site improvements on that site, just to build on your existing site. So that same money is going to be spent on the next door property, if that were where you were to locate, to tear down those buildings and make that site ready for new construction.
So therefore, the fourth option, if you're using the seventy million cost of Concept Three, that would be the cost to acquire and demolish that building and you still would have an additional cost to build a new library, correct?
But, no, what I, sorry, to clarify, what I'm saying is that the demolition cost of those buildings next door would be very similar to the demolition cost we have built into Concept Three. The wild card here is what's the, what's the cost of actually buying the property? That's what we don't really know at all. So I would, I would suggest that the, the close to sixty-five million that is that Concept Three, you could spend that money on the adjacent site and that would get you the demolition and the construction of a new facility on that adjacent site. The cost of that site, I don't know what the cost would be.
That's correct. So therefore, there is no logical conclusion, you're, right now, you're speculating because you don't know what is in that building. I'm, we all know because the year it was built, asbestos is going to be there.
Yes, we've not walked that building, so I cannot tell you what the, what the conditions would be and how it would affect demolition.
Okay, thank you.
Randy, I have a question. That twenty to twenty-four million to do the total gut of the current building, that's an estimate if you don't run into any unforeseens once you start gutting it, correct?
I would, I would say, not entirely. I mean, it, it would be an entire gut of the building, so we're, we're assuming we're taking everything out of there. So there's, we're not trying to preserve any of the existing systems.
But once you start gutting an old building like that, you could find structural problems in the walls that you don't see till you start tearing things out, correct?
It's, I'm not going to say that that's not there, but we've done a thorough walkthrough of the building and evaluated the condition of the existing structure and the systems. And yes, there's always some potential unforeseen conditions, but it's, I think we know for the most part, we're pretty confident in what that costs are going to be.
Does that include putting in a new receiving dock and new elevators, freight elevators and stuff?
Yes, it assumes that we would have to replace those components.
And because when you do that much renovation, you have to bring everything up to code, correct?
Correct.
So, do you have a, a gotcha allowance in there of a certain percentage, like?
The contingency fund?
I'm not really gotcha, because when you start renovating old buildings, you could, there's a lot of gotchas that come to you as you uncover things.
Yes, it is, it is very common, and I will tell you, all of these concepts, because we are at such an early stage, all of those concept costs were escalated seven percent, assuming that we're going to be two years down the road before we even start construction. And then there's another twenty percent in there that is just for all of those unknowns. And there's a lot of unknowns at this point.
Yeah, that's, I've done enough remodels to know there's a lot of gotchas when you get in there on these old houses.
You are correct.
That's, that's one thing you always have to worry about. Okay, thank you.
So are the details in the full feasibility study, things such as that, that Ms. Humphries asked?
That is the one piece that we're putting in and we will, before we send a new link out, we will get the cost information into that feasibility study and then republish it and send a new link. But everything else is in the full report right now.
Okay. Greg, I have a question for you, please. Are you around?
I am here.
Okay, so is it, is there anything in this, is there any reason, let me just, just ask you straight, is there any reason that this presentation should have been presented to, in a, in a private meeting? Since you're using public funds, this is a result of a, an update of a contract, so is there any reason that this should have been discussed in, in two, at least two private meetings with three board members before bringing to the full board?
I don't know when we're, I don't know what, I don't know why it would be or why it wouldn't be. I'm, I'm not sure what your question is.
No, that's just the question. Why would there, would there have been a need to have a non-public, and I'm, I'm staying away from the use of the term secret, but why would there have been a need to have a non-public discussion prior to bringing this recommendation to the full board? I mean, I can't find it. And so that's why I'm, I'm concerned that the, the process is, is, has gone on like it is. And I'm, and I'm saying it openly and publicly, because we're talking about public dollars here. So I'm, 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 I'm just asking, I don't understand why this would have been two meetings discussed before it comes to a public meeting, to the full board, so. Your face reflects my, my, my concern as well.
I don't know the, I don't know the answer to your question.
I don't know the answer.
Randy, I have a question. Are you asking for a motion today? Or Carol, are you asking for us to make a motion, or would you prefer it be to the thirteenth, or what is your ask for us today?
We were asked to complete a feasibility study and obviously, Garcia has completed that, and they supposed to bring it to the board to complete, you know, the contract that they were asked to do. So the, the next step is, do we, I mean, leading, I mean, you have to wait for the board's leadership as to, do we go ahead and find out the questions that Dr. Nguyen was like asking of the people next door? Would that entail more money, you know, getting all that? What will the board's preference be? I mean, I, you know, I can, I can, I have my own ideas, but that's not for me to say. I have to wait on what the board's preference will be. Because we could work with the community and find out if, you know, that next door property is still available, is that something that we could look into, or whatever the board's leaders right now, but that's not for me to say.
Yeah, Dr. Yeager, I think it was, it's just more of an informational item, just to accept the report from Garcia Architecture Firm, but I don't think, unless I'm mistaken, I don't know that there's necessarily any action to take, other than just accept this report as an informational item at this time. I think what Ms. Levers is referencing is potentially, yeah, another board meeting regarding the library, to have a more full conversation in terms of, okay, what are some next steps? If any, you know, do we leave it at, at this? Do we want to pursue any of the options that were presented? I don't think we're asking the board at this time to say, okay, we like option number one, we want to pursue that. I don't think that's what, what's being put on the table now. I think it's just, hey, here's, here's what the architects found, here are the different recommend, here's the recommendation from them, and it's more of an informational item today.
Okay, well, I make a motion that we accept the presentation and discussion by Garcia Architects regarding the main library.
Second?
We've been seconded. Any further discussion?
I just have a question that, as accepting it, then have, have they been paid?
Garcia asked to send us an invoice, and, you know, once they send an invoice, that obviously will pay them.
Yeah.
But we haven't, we haven't done that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, further discussion?
I want to thank them for the report and thank you for adding the numbers, because that was the question I had when it was first presented. But in lieu that we're in a pandemic and the economy is somewhat in shambles, it scares me. I don't know where you're going to get all this money from. And then you have so many people who may not have a job. We look at the airline industry, what's going on there, and some other industries and how they're all affected. And it just, again, where's all this money coming from? And our tax base is already taxed to the nth degree, and they're complaining about paying taxes. And I'm not saying we don't need a library, we do need one, but the question is, where is all this money coming from?
And, and the one thing I will say to that, Ms. Page, is that when we started the fundraising for the South Branch Library, it was right when the recession hit and people said we couldn't do it. Now, it was a lot less money. We all, we were all, I will say that.
Five, six million, but when you say forty.
I know, I know, I'm saying.
Show me the magic, if you can do this.
I will, I will say, it's, it's a lot more money and we did it a lot, a lot faster than we thought we could. But we, I think we need to look at the report that they're going to send us, and we need to sit down and look at it and think about it, and then, and then make our decision after we look at everything and look at, see how it could be financed. Can it be done without a tax increase? Can it? I don't know. That's something that we have to look at.
Well, I'm not saying, don't look at it. I'm just saying, in lieu of the economy.
Yes, there's a lot of.
Get it out of your head on this one, you're good.
Can we go ahead and vote, please?
So.
I understand the voting, but we do have the right to make a comment, if that's okay.
And I agree with you, Ms. Humphries, and that's a decision for the full board.
Right, yes.
Full transparency, not secret meetings two or three times to, I guess, to do what? I have no idea. But yeah, we're talking about taxpayers of Kansas City, Kansas, paying for it, not Wind Island County, but Kansas City, Kansas.
Yes, because there was an apparent meeting between Valdina and Wanda that, with the mayor, that a lot of us don't even know about.
So we're going to go ahead and hold the vote. I don't think that there's any, I don't think there's any secret meetings going on. I don't think this is being productive to continue this conversation right now.
I was president and, and Wanda was vice president, we were the officers, as you all are meeting as well.
So, so I don't think there are any, excuse me, excuse me, I don't think there are any secret meetings being held. I think everyone's trying to be as informed as we can. If we need to hash anything out, we can do that independently and off, off of, off this, this time right now. So there's a motion and a second on the floor. We are all trying to gather as much information as we can to be as informed as we can when we're making decisions. So I appreciate everyone's thoughtfulness, the questions. Mr. Garcia, you and your firm have done a great job with the, the assessment and presenting today. Thank you for the information, and I don't think there are any secret meetings going on. So anyway, Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call vote? Thank you.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Jamie Humphries?
Jamie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody, again. Mr. Garcia and your team, thank you so much for your time today. We really appreciate you and we look forward to, to the continued work. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much as well. Goodbye.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Ms. Levers.
Thank you, Ms. Levers.
Okay, we will continue on with our agenda. We have an item C, and I will actually pass that, Dr. Miguel, I think, is that you next on the agenda?
You're on mute.
Oh, you're on mute, sorry.
I'm so sorry. This is a recommendation to accept the bids of, from HL Restoration, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty dollars, and I will invite either Wayne or Doug to give us some background.
I'll jump in. First of all, I'll apologize to the board and to Dr. Miguel for the bit of surprise for this board agenda item. Frankly, I'd hoped to have it on earlier, but due to circumstances, I realized earlier this week that if we waited until the next board meeting of October thirteenth, it'd be pressing our schedule for what, you know, I'm still anticipating to be the return of students in November, so I did ask if we could put this on. Our head custodian out at Eware had made us aware several weeks ago, that he thought maybe there was an issue with some water infiltration and possibly some mold, so we called in our industrial hygienist consultant that we've used. Often, they did find some mold. We initially got our normal, like we typically do, proposals from three or four companies to get the remediation, repair, and basically remodeling work done. Got those numbers back and then realized, I guess, one of those benefits of, of not being in a huge rush like we typically are in this kind of a situation, the students weren't there in the building, that we had time to actually send it out to a formal bid, which is what we've done here, and frankly, almost the same results. HL Restoration had given us the low proposal, the little low bid on this. So I had asked for permission to bring this to the board, so we can get that work started. I had put on the bid document, I wanted it to start October one and be done by the end of October. So that's why I, I pressed the schedule a little bit, again, my apologies. So that's why I pressed the schedule a little bit. Again, my apologies for that.
That's okay.
I make a motion that we accept the low bid for mold remediation, modular classroom for Eugene Ware Elementary.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? If not, Ms. Smith, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger?
A.C., yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Doug and Dr. Miguel for that.
Thank you very much. If you'll indulge me. Hi, Leslie.
How you doing, Ed?
Yeah, thanks for letting us take Leslie from you, Doug. We appreciate that. She's doing an amazing job as well, so thank you. All right, so we are in the point of our agenda when we will head into an executive session. Dr. Miguel, how much time do you, we think we'll need for this first one?
I think 15 minutes should be sufficient.
Okay, so we will go in for 15 minutes at 5:55, coming out at 6:20? No, 6:10, is that right? 6:10?
Yes.
Did we get the, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Did we get the link? I don't remember seeing the link.
Yes, ma'am, I sent that about an hour before the meeting started. I will resend it right now, though, if, for-
Thank you.
Randy?
Yeah.
Can we have a little break?
Okay, I will give a break until 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
And then we will come back at 6 o'clock. Or no?
Go in at 6 o'clock.
We will go in at 6 o'clock. Come back at- Executive session, coming out at 6:15. Can I have a motion?
So move. Second?
Moved and seconded. Ms. Smith, roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger?
A.C., yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. May I have a motion to come back into open session, please?
Oh.
Second. Bunch of seconds.
Bunch of seconds. Moved and seconded. Ms. Smith, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We are back in open session.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of hardware equipment.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Not Ms. Smith. Roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Brownlee Page, yes.
Excuse me, Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger?
A.C., yes.
Great, thank you, everybody. So it's time for a second executive session. I would request, or I'd ask for a motion as of the board recesses into executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel to protect privacy interests for 10 minutes, going in at 6:18, coming out at 6:28.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger?
A.C., yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, everybody. See you back at 10 minutes. Have a motion. Come back into open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Smith, roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
A.C., yes.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. May I have a motion to go back into executive session at 6:30 for 15 minutes and coming back at 6:45?
So moved. Second.
Take your pick, Leslie. Go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger?
A.C., yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Hello, everybody. Can I get a motion to come back into open session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith, roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Nguyen, yes. Okay, Dr. Jaeger? Dr. Jaeger?
I don't think he's on yet, but I think we got four, so we're good. Welcome back to open session, everybody. Thank you. So at this time, I would request a motion or ask for a motion to recess into executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of parties involved under coma, going in at 6:50. And Dr. Miguel, how much time do you think we would need?
15 minutes should do. And I need Ms. Toshman with me.
Okay, so going in at 6:50 and coming out at 7:05.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Second, Ms. Smith, roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
A.C., yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, I think we're missing a few people. Can I get a motion to come back into open session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Smith, would you do a roll call vote?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, excuse me, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger?
A.C., yes.
Great, thank you. Can I get a motion to return to executive session at 7:08, coming back at 7:18, so for 10 minutes?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Smith, roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger?
A.C., yes.
All right, welcome back. Can I get a motion that we return into open session, please?
So moved.
And I'll second. Ms. Smith, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
You're on mute, Janie.
Yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
So we're just voting to come back in, right?
Yes.
Okay, yes.